Good evening. I'll call the regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees to order. All items to be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I extend a warm welcome to those present and those watching on television or online. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to the reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. The board does not make management decisions, and the board does not solve problems of individuals. Management of the school districts is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. At this time, I'd like to ask you to turn your cellphones to silent if you haven't already, and we appreciate your time and your interest in Waco ISD. At this time, we have public comments on agenda items posted on our agenda. I've received three requests to address the board, but none of the requests are on an item that is posted on our agenda. There is no item on our agenda regarding the proposed termination or non-renewal of any professional contract. That's not an item that the board is going to be considering tonight, and therefore, those that have been asked to address the board to discuss a personnel matter that is not on our agenda will not be recognized to speak since that is not in accordance with this board's policy. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the board on an item that's posted on the agenda? At this time, the board will go into closed session pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-071 and 551-074 to consult with the board's attorney and to discuss personnel matters. We will reconvene in open session in an hour, and at that time, we will resume the meeting with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Thank you. I want to especially lift up the person who had died today on our Lake Air campus by had a very unfortunate medical event and had a car accident. None of our children or staff or families were involved, but it was a very sad day for the Lake Air campus. So at this time, if you will join me for a moment. Pledge of Allegiance. I understand we have some special guests here tonight to help us with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is then one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you going to introduce the pledge leaders first?
I was going to have you guys come down.
Okay, so for the first time in over two years, first of all, the seats in the boardroom tonight are actually you're actually sitting close to somebody tonight rather than six feet away. And of course, we no longer need our masks, although they're encouraged in our schools. But then the other really exciting thing is for the first time in two years, the board will be able to greet our students from the floor. And those of you who are new to the board will be a new experience.
Yes. So I'd like to invite the board down to recognize our students. Each month, one campus selects students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance during our regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees for the month of March. Jordan Johnson, Jayoni Johnson, Trinity Bridgewater, and Terry Scott from J.H. Heinz Elementary were selected for this honor. Jordan and Jayoni are twins in the fifth grade, and they each enjoy reading, painting, playing Roblox, and playing outside. Jordan wants to be a farmer, and Jayani wants to be a teacher when she grows up. Trinity is in the fourth grade and loves math. She loves to draw and spend time with her sisters, and Trinity would like to be a pop star or a teacher when she grows up. Terry's in the first grade and loves art and math and also playing with his sisters, and when he grows up, he wants to be Spider-Man. Thank you to their grandmother, Ms. Pam Stillman, for sharing your amazing grandchildren with us and for being here tonight, and to Principal Taylor for also being here tonight as well. Thank you. Next, we have our Texas High School Mock Trial Competition. Each calendar year, over 160 schools across the state and approximately 200-plus students participate in this challenging academic competition. The program provides a great way for students to gain insight into the judicial system and helps them build confidence in public speaking. A courtroom artist must be able to convincingly and accurately capture people, events, and surroundings, establish a setting, have news judgment, strive for fairness and objectivity, and be able to work quickly, have a sense of decorum within the courtroom, and lastly, the work should be functional and credible. Waco High School senior Bailey Barton participated in the competition in March and did an amazing job, earning third place in courtroom artist category for the drawings pictured here. And can Bailey's parents and teacher please stand and be recognized tonight? Next, we move on to our Texas High School Women's Powerlifting Association State Championships. University High School junior Crystal Sanchez was awarded a silver medal at the Texas High School Women's Powerlifting Association State Championship earlier this month in Corpus Christi. Ms. Sanchez was able to get in the zone and successfully completed a squat of 390 pounds, a bench press of 190 pounds, and a deadlift of 370 pounds for a total of 950 pounds. And just to give you an idea of what that might look like, it could be a polar bear, an Arabian horse, or four full-size refrigerators. Congratulations to Crystal, and thank you to her parents and coaches for being here Now, we have our Texas Association of Future Educators National Qualifiers. The intent for the Texas Association of Future Educators or TAFI is to gather students who are interested in becoming future educators and foster that passion. University High School TAFI students participated at the State Teach Tomorrow Conference in Dallas, Texas. The following students have advanced to Nationals at the Educators Rising National Conference, held on June 24th through June 27th in Washington, D.C. in the following categories: Batima Barragon and Yomara Ponzi Interactive Bulletin Board, Abigail Barrientos' Presentation on Educational Support Services, Mary De La Rosa, and Beyond or Where Children's Literature Book. And we would like to congratulate them and thank their teachers and parents for being here with them tonight. Next, we have our International Thespian Excellence Award winners. The International Thespian Excellence Awards, or the Thespis, recognize the highest level of achievement in school performance, technical writing, theater, and filmmaking. This educational program celebrates the work of theater students, giving them the opportunity to receive constructive feedback on prepared theatrical materials, technical design, plays, and short films while recognizing their achievements on local, regional, and national stages. Top-scoring students receive superior ratings for various criteria laid out in the rubric, and those who receive overall superiors are able to advance to the next level of Thespie events. This year, Waco High had 12 students qualify for the National Thespie Competition, which will be held June 20th through the 24th at Indiana University. And they are as follows: Rashay Desaline Deborah Brinkley for duet acting, Lydia Allen and Lily Howell for duet acting, Ciara Shaw for monologue, Fiani Ramos for solo musical, Ms. Bailey Barton again for solo musical, Brianna Acevedo for sound design on Shrek the Musical, Luke Townsend lighting design on Shrek the Musical, William Prather lighting design Shrek the Musical, Lena Denson scenic design Shrek the Musical, and Evan Hunter makeup design for Shrek the Musical. Teachers and parents, if you could please stand to be recognized. And we'll take this group picture, and then we will call on our university high school University High School had three students qualify for the National Thespie Competition: Maricela Suarez for stage management, Wait Until Dark, Nancy Gazata for solo musical, and Tyrell Thompson for solo acting. And next, we have the Community Partner Award. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner. Making a Difference for students with Waco ISD Award outstanding in community partners, the recognition celebrates them. The theme for the 2021-2022 school year, "We Are Waco ISD," acknowledges that it's not just our employees and students who make Waco ISD community a great place to teach and learn. In March, the district is recognizing Swift uniforms, and they are not here with us tonight, but we do have a photo. They have been a partner with Guaca since the 2018-2019 school year, and they have regularly donated scrubs to Guaca for their uniforms. The donations have enabled us to provide uniforms to students who needed assistance. Swift uniforms has consistently provided top-notch service and allowed us to begin clinical rotations at the beginning of the school year on time, and they continue their partnership with Guaca program over the past several years, and it's been invaluable. Thank you to them. And that concludes our special recognitions. Thank you.
Congratulations again to all of the students who we recognized tonight. Feel free to leave and go home. Don't feel like you have to sit through the rest of our meeting. We're very proud of you, and thank you for coming tonight to allow us to recognize you. All right, Dr. Ken Cannon, Superintendent's Report.
All right. Well, good evening. I'll get started. I have a few items this evening that I'd like to share with the board and a few slides to go with those. The first is in regards to elementary and middle school UIL. During January and early February, all of our elementary schools and middle schools participated in the annual UIL Academics Competition. Those events were held virtually again this year with the assistance of our campus UIL coordinators and the organization in direction by the Fine Arts Department. At the elementary level, there were 516 students who competed in 27 events. At the middle school level, 453 students participated in a total of 41 events. And those events included writing, math, science, social studies, music, art, and a variety of speaking events. Each individual or team that places in an event earns points towards the overall district championship. And this year, we are pleased to announce the following top six elementary teams. Lake Air Montessori was first, Hillcrest PDS Alta Vista was third, Dean Highland was fourth, West Avenue was fifth, and Parkdale Elementary was sixth. And I know we have some proud principals and maybe staff members present. You all can stand and be recognized from our elementary schools. Thank you. Thank you. That's a lot of extra work that our teachers do above and beyond what they normally do to prepare for their classroom instruction. So thank you, teachers. I know that's extra time that you put in. For our middle school campuses, our top three teams were Tennyson Middle School first place, second place was Lake Air Montessori, and third place was Indian Spring Middle School. Congratulations. And you may stand and be recognized. I see some trophies. All right. Good job. And thank you for your extra work for our students. Appreciate you. Kids learn a lot. They learn a lot during those academic competitions, and they're really important, and we are looking forward to having them in person next year. Next, I would like to mention the Celebrity Cook-Off Event. It was the 15th Annual HEB Celebrity Cook-Off benefiting the Waco ISD Education Foundation. It was held last Friday evening. It was my first one since I've been here. The very first one was scheduled in March of 20 when I after I got here, and it was canceled due to COVID. So it was exciting to see it for the first time. There were 25 celebrity chef teams representing businesses and organizations from across Waco, and they prepared appetizers, entrees, and/or desserts for guests to sample. And then awards were given at the end, and we had the following awards that were received. For People's Choice in the amateur category was Fat Matt and Big Al's Barbecue from Extra Banks, Extra Co. Banks and Sturdy Still, and that was Alex Eichenberg and Matt Stevens. People's Choice for professional assistance was Yours Truly with Julia Pennington as the real chef, and Henry Tapia in Sodexo. So I want to thank them. They worked really hard. We had a really big piece of beef, if you saw it. It was really big. It was 68 pounds of meat that was cooked and cut in half and served. It was quite beautiful. The top chef in the amateur category was Joe Callejo of I hope I said his name right, Callejo Wealth Management. And for the first time, we had a student group win, and the top chef with professional assistance was University High School Culinary Arts Program. And so that was fun for the kids. I was really excited for them. It is estimated that they the foundation raised approximately $111,500, all of which will go towards innovative classroom grants. And so we're super excited. I know Trustee Izetti was involved in helping with that event. Thank you for that. Do you want to say anything about it?
No, we're really excited to get to start working on grants for teachers. I know they're about to start that grant application process for the Waco ISD teachers, and so it's exciting to get to see that money go back into the classrooms where our students will get to see the benefit.
Great. Thank you. Waco ISD Job Fair is scheduled for Saturday, April 9th, at 9 o'clock at University High School, and the purpose is to recruit applicants for all positions within Waco ISD. That includes teachers, library media specialists, diagnosticians, speech pathologists, paraprofessionals, custodians, cafeteria workers, you name it. We're looking to hire on April 9th. I'm looking at Dr. Lopez. And I want to thank the board and remind you that we have a and this is for the benefit of anyone that's watching, but we do have a retention bonus that the board approved back in the fall. So anyone who is any teacher who is hired is eligible for a $5,000 retention incentive if they are hired by August of 2022 and they come back next year. So if they come back again the next year, they will receive $2,500 in their December 2023 paycheck and another $2,500 if they return the following year, and that will be paid in their September 2024 paycheck. So thank you again for approving that. Anyone who's interested in participating or pre-registering in the Job Fair can do so online at wacoisd.org/jobfair. And if they've completed an online application and they pre-registered, they can be interviewed and hired on the spot, and we're excited about that. It's nice to have it in person again this year, another another thing that we're getting to do again. And it's also been nice for our HR department to be able to go out to colleges and universities again for recruiting. So Daniel and his team have been busy doing that, and will continue to be busy doing that. So thank you. Any questions about the Job Fair? All right. Men's and Women's Women's and Men's Empowerment Summit. The Women's Summit was held on March 3rd. The district partnered with the Junior League of Waco to host that summit, and the theme was Becoming. And that focused on providing our students information to help them determine their paths for success. We had over 200 students participated who participated in breakout sessions, which were led by community members, and those community members, I believe, were predominantly or all Waco ISD graduates. Session leaders provided information related to college and career readiness, entrepreneurship, and goal setting. Our Board Vice President Stephanie Quarterwig participated, as well as Trustee Izetti, and Mrs. Izetti served as emcee for the event. And that was really fun. And our Board President, Ms. Teke, was also in attendance. Thank you all for participating. And I had the opportunity to greet the students during lunch. It was really nice. The keynote speaker for the event was Chief Cheryl Victorian, the City of Waco Police Chief. She gave a really inspiring speech regarding her path from childhood to police officer and really her journey through the ranks all the way up to the chief of police. And she really helped the students to understand the value of goal-setting, working hard, and believing in themselves to achieve success in life. It was really a very inspiring speech. Our boys participated in the Men's Empowerment Summit on March 17th, and that was in collaboration with Baylor University's Community Relations Cultural Wealth Department under the direction of Quavis Peacock, and their theme was "A Tie That Bind." And the goals of the Men's Summit were to increase the college-to-career pipeline and encourage students to complete high school and thoughtfully consider next steps for a successful future, to increase knowledge and awareness for students about the schools available in Waco, Baylor, MCC, TSTC, Texas Tech, and Tarleton, and to connect students to local male leaders who serve as positive role models to inspire our students to make positive choices that will set them up for greater success in their future. I know Trustee Davis provided the welcome for the event. I know Board Secretary Jose Vedanya and Trustee Keith Gilery were also at the event. Thank you for participating. There were 132 young men in attendance who participated in the breakout sessions with local leaders, and the keynote speaker was Mr. Charles Williams, the president of Baylor Scott &amp; White Health Crest Medical Center of Waco. And I did not get to hear him, but I heard about his speech from several people and how wonderful it was. And he talked about the need to determine passion in life, developing a brand, setting goals, and working hard to experience success. He also stressed the importance of students reaching out to others who can positively influence their lives, and I really appreciated him participating. And I'd like to thank Yolanda Williams, if she is here this evening. Yolanda, would you stand? Let us recognize you. Thank you. Yolanda was the district person who worked closely with all of the entities to make sure this happened. It is a lot of work, so thank you for that. We appreciate you. And then the last thing I have this evening is a graph to share with you. Last month, I talked about our attendance rates, and so I have an update for you on that. And what I want you to notice this evening is that we're improving. So you see across the bottom, we have marking periods. Those are six weeks grading periods from the beginning of the year. You can see where we dipped on marking period four, the fourth six weeks, to 84.78%. I talked about that last month. That was primarily due to Omicron. We're back to 87% so far. We only have about a week left in this grading period. The end of the grading period is next Friday. So we're low. We're still low, lower than we want to be. It looked like we peaked. You can see we peaked about the second grading period. Third grading period was pretty close. We took that dip, and we're struggling to come back up. So we're still concerned. Our elementary students are attending at a higher rate than our secondary students. Middle schools are hovering about 85% attendance rate. High school students are at about an 80% attendance rate, and that's pretty they're pretty neck and neck from school to school, which is really interesting, and it's really detrimental to us. It's detrimental to the kids. They're losing instructional time in their classrooms, which makes it hard to pass your classes if you're not in attendance. Makes it hard to earn your credits if you're at the high school level, which means it makes it hard to graduate. So we're really focused on getting our attendance up. I know we've spent some time visiting with our principals and talking about strategies to do that. It also impacts our funding, and we have some more information this evening. Cheryl Davis will share with you about attendance. We did get some good news from the state in that they are going to help us with the first four grading periods, but they aren't helping us with the fifth or the sixth six weeks nor the decreased enrollment this year. So we have some challenges ahead because of that, and Cheryl will speak to those later this evening. And that's all I have for you. Any questions?
Yes?
Thank you so much, Dr. Ken Cannon. In regards to the attendance, what are is it on? Sorry. In regard to the attendance, what are kind of some measures that we're kind of making to make sure that?
Sure. We have been pulling together a chronic absentee list and working with our campuses on how to reach out to students. I know we have PCLs, parent-community liaisons across the district who've been reaching out during the year. But what we've heard is that we people won't answer the door. They won't answer their phone, and we're really struggling to make connections with kids who are missing school. And so I know Dr. Gutierrez has been out visiting with campus teams and working through those lists to make sure we're trying to connect. Do you want to add anything to that? Yeah, okay, great. She's been directly involved with that. Oh, and let me add while you're doing that, let me add that we also set aside quite a bit of money in our Essar funding for attendance incentives, and so we reviewed those in our recent budget meetings with all of our principals. They have money left for this year and money for next year. So we have money to do things to help get our kids back in. So we have money to do things, to help get our kids back in school. And so, you want to add?
Yes. Good evening. So we're doing a number of things. We have monthly PLCs with our principals. And at our PLCs, we're bringing it up as a topic of conversation. So we're sharing ideas about strategies that are working in some schools, so principals are able to do that. Sometimes we're diving into the attendance data. We also have it on an agenda item for every principal's meeting to continue focusing on this data. And like Dr. Kinkanen said, the PCLs are, they're doing their work and everything's being tracked. Our counselors are doing an amazing job. I mean, it's amazing what our counselors know about each and every student. Really impressed with the work they're doing. And then we have, the English Learning Department has someone who works with our Spanish-speaking parents and really doing a phenomenal job at our secondary level with that. And now we're diving in, like Dr. Kinkanen said. And these are just some really tough issues, you know, where we're just coming in with Dr. Warren and her staff and figuring out how else we can support the schools to get our kids in school regularly. And so every situation is a unique case. And we're just having to work around wraparound services, adding mentoring, and just doing special things. Mental health is really a big situation that we're having to figure out how to address at greater levels than we've had to in the past, but.
Did get our optional extended School Day program up and running at Waco High School. We have, I heard we had about 20 students participating this week. And that's a program where students are coming four hours in the evening, Monday through Friday. And because we know that, we know some of our students left us to go to work when the pandemic hit. And so we're trying to get students back. And we'd set aside quite a bit of money to do that. And you all approved that application to TEA. So that's a pretty big strategy that we have underway, but it has been a challenge. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Does any member of the board wish to remove anything for further discussion from the Consent Agenda as posted? Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Quarterwig. Second? Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. All right. Let's see. I'm sure I'm on our number nine? Yes, okay. Ms. Barrera, I know you're here to discuss an amendment to the professional services contract with O'Connell-Robinson for the design of Tennyson Middle School. The third school is now ramping up. New school.
Yes, it is. So, good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Kinkanen. So it's time to do an amendment for O'Connell-Robinson so they can continue their work for us with Tennyson. The target is to have Tennyson open in fall of 2024. And we're wanting to have plenty of construction time to allow for the most competitive and plenty of time for the contractor to build the job. So that we don't, we're not, maybe make it any harder than it has to be for them. So that's why we're here, asking to get started with O'Connell-Robinson.
All right. Does anybody have any questions from Ms. Barrera? We've, of course, been very happy with O'Connell-Robinson. I see Mr. Stersinger here tonight, thank you for coming. And unless there are any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Contract Amendment.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Quarterwig. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Izetti. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, next, we have our architect on board. Now the board needs to make a decision about the construction delivery method for Tennyson Middle School. Ms. Barrera?
Yes, so on the Tennyson Middle School, we've had a lot of conversation about which construction delivery method we should proceed with on this project. As you know, on the high school and on Carver, we're doing CEM at Risk. We feel like with Tennyson, since we will have bid the Carver project, we will have seen exactly, we will know exactly what that one cost, that it might be, that it would be best to go and do the Competitive Seal Proposal Method for this project. And the reason, you know, we could wait a little longer to ask you about that, but we wanted to go ahead because we'd like to really begin generating interest with local contractors, local general contractors that would be able to compete on the Tennyson project. And, you know, we're going to, you know, both Jared and I have talked with multiple firms, and we've both identified between the two of us at least five solid general contractors that are willing to give us a proposal on the Tennyson project. Sure. Okay. Sure, sure. Okay? That's okay. So, okay, so let's start with CMAR. So that's the delivery method that we're using for the high school and for Carver. And that delivery method is really well-suited for a complex project. Let's use Waco High School as the example. It's going to have multiple phases because we have students on campus the entire time. So when you have students on campus the entire time you're building, you really want to make sure that, safety is number one. That you don't, you wouldn't want to have multiple contractors trying to work on that campus at a single time. And since it's a phased project, if you didn't use a CEM at Risk delivery method, you would conceivably have multiple contractors working on the campus. And that would not necessarily be the safest environment for everybody. So the CEM at Risk, in that particular incidence, allows us to get the project going sooner and work with the same people so that the superintendent on the job site will know the principal, will know the people that they're supposed to talk to, and will really minimize the impact to that campus. So that's really why the CEM at Risk, you know, on a multi-phase project that's very complex, it's going to help us get this one done, get it done sooner than if we had not used that delivery method. And since time is money, that's an important consideration. So when you have a project that's more simple, like Tennyson, which, the way we're approaching that one is we're setting it up as a single, a single project where the general contractor can come in and stay there and finish the whole project at one time. So it's not, it's going to have phases, but that's not going to impact the campus so much. So we believe that we will get a more competitive price because we're doing some other things, like the portables you approved in the previous agenda item. We're going to be setting that up and moving the students over there so that we can construct the whole school and then move them in, and then demolish the school and build the athletic fields, kind of in a nutshell. Well, that's pretty simple to do, so we wouldn't have to have multiple contractors on site. And using the CSP delivery method lets us have more local participation perhaps, which is something that's very important to us, and also perhaps a more competitive price. So.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Gillory.
How does the local contractors and also the minority-owned contractors, how does that look on the current projects? The numbers and are the percentages there? And did you use some sort of point system in order to get there as far as awarding those contracts?
So, as you know, we've just done GMP number one on Carver so far. And we've just received numbers on GMP number two, but they're very preliminary. It just actually happened today, so they haven't worked their way through it. We have seen more local participation on GMP two, but these GMPs are, these, think of these proposals, are very limited scope. They're not the whole project. They're very limited in scope. It's the site utilities, some civil work. So you're not really touching all of the local contractor's scope of work yet. We will see that more in the next GMP, three for Carver and two for Waco High School. They are continuing to do a lot of outreach. We did a local pre-proposal meeting for the Carver bids last week. We had a couple of contractors show up for that. So I would like to say, I would like to see more local participation. But it's also really, we're still in a very small amount of scope. So as we gear up for GMP, three for Carver and two for Waco, we're going to really increase our outreach to the local agencies. So.
Well, and then also, when the GMP is presented, there will be a list of subcontractors?
Yes, yes. Now, just like last.
That the CMAR will provide along with the GMP proposal. And if you remember, at that time, that's a good time to ask for information about that list of subs that made up the GMP when it's presented.
The contractor showed me today that they reached out to 2,000, more than 2,000 different subcontractors. They notified them. They had over 120 actually look at the plans. And then they received like, I think it was 28 or 29 proposals total on all the scope. But like I said, it's a very minimal, limited scope still. So.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the delivery method as presented for Tennyson Middle School Replacement Project.
I'll move that we approve the delivery method for Tennyson as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya.
Second?
Thank you, Ms. Quarterwig. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, Dr. McDurham? Oh, there you are, behind the post. Consider, discuss, take appropriate action regarding amendment to performance contract between Waco ISD and Transformation Waco. Welcome.
President Teckel, board members, Dr. Kinkanen, thank you for inviting me to present the Transformation Waco Proposed Amendments to our contract and performance measures. I'm joined this evening by three Transformation Waco board members. Our Board Chair, Malcolm Duncan, board members Melly Wickliffe and Dr. Eliana Newman. The Texas Education Agency has directed 1882 partnerships to include three points in their extension process in response to accountability changes to the pandemic. One is to set an end date to our extension. Two is to set targets, including a grade. And three is to provide consequences should the operating partner, or OP, fail to meet targets. Cal DeBir and I have throughout the year worked with Lindsay Denman, TEA's Texas Partnership Manager, to ensure that our proposed changes meet all criteria to continue our school's funding and support. TEA has been pleased with our proposal. They were complimentary of our targets. And they have approved the extension that we're proposing pending both boards' approval. The contract's redline proposal is in your contract. And I, Mr. DeBir has provided a comparison for you. I do, however, want to point out some, and review some of the key changes. In Article II of the amendment, we've removed the language of automatic renewal. In Article 16, we've proposed extending the contract to 2024 and including the consequences required by TEA. I read this section word for word to my board when presenting this information last week, and I'd like to do the same for you. If any of the schools operated by OP under this agreement receive an accountability rating of D or F for two consecutive years, OP shall be deemed to be placed on probationary status with regards to such school or schools. While in probationary status, OP shall be required to submit an improvement plan to Waco ISD and shall consent to additional oversight and accountability by Waco ISD in order to monitor progress against the specific goals of such improvement plan relating to such school or schools. Waco ISD may terminate this agreement or unilaterally alter Addendum V to remove one or more schools from the list of schools operated by OP if such school or schools operated by the OP under this agreement receive an accountability rating of D or F for three or more consecutive years in which is operated by the OP, or such school or schools fail to substantially achieve the student outcome goals specified in Addendum III attached after the third-year school of operation under this agreement. As Mr. DeBir noted when he provided our annual evaluation in the fall, Transformation Waco campuses were deeply impacted by the pandemic and its associated challenges. It is worth stating implicitly that the performance contract did not anticipate a global pandemic that would disrupt school operations for more than two years. It is Transformation Waco's assertion that the targets set before the pandemic are no longer meaningful, or a meaningful way to measure our school's performances. Preliminary research is indicating that it will take three to five years to recuperate the learning loss caused by the pandemic. Our children don't have three to five years, and so our measures are aggressive. Many of our targets get as close to pre-pandemic levels this year, and we strive to hit standard in two years by 2023. I will briefly describe, I will briefly describe our proposed new performance measures. Performance Measure One is overall campus rating. We have set that target at meeting standard in 2023 for all five Transformation Waco campuses. School progress is the measure number two. And again, our target is to meet standard by 2023. School progress has goal progress measures that contribute to the final accountability rating for school progress. So Performance Measure Two, Goal Progress Measure One, Relative Performance Scaled Score, sets the accountability threshold based on performance of economically disadvantaged students. We set that target at our pre-pandemic target for 2018. Performance Measure Two, Goal Progress Measure Two, measures academic growth in third through eighth grade reading and math. We set that target at the midpoint between the estimated growth of 2021 and the original target of 70 points. Performance Measure Three is the Closing the Gap Domain. Our target for that domain is a C by 2023. The Goal Progress Measures one through three and the Academic Growth Measures are components to the Closing the Gap Domain. Each target is set between the baseline target of 2018 and the original target for the 2021 school year. Goal Progress Measure One is, it measures the academic performance on all star subjects combined. Goal Progress Measure Two measures the performance on English Language Proficiency Standards. And Goal Progress Measure Three measures the performance in reading and math in grades three through eight. Performance Measure Four is the NWEA MAP targets. It is the percent of students meeting growth targets on the MAP assessment in ELA and Math. We've set that target at the 2021 results and baseline target of 50%. So that's the midpoint. The same holds true for the student growth measure. We've updated our Teacher Satisfaction Section to include specific questions. to include specific questions which are included in your packets. We spoke, we've spoken to Panorama, the survey provider, and they are recommending that to all of their schools that their set, reset district measures for this year to be baseline in teacher satisfaction surveys. But as you can see, we have specifically named questions that we feel most relate to an improved or healthy school culture. The parent survey, we've, in the parent survey, we've continued to ask the net promoter question, which is followed in our previous contract. How likely is it that you would recommend your child's school to a friend or colleague? But we've also added additional questions from the Panorama survey. We did an early survey in the fall of our parents. And so we've spoken to Panorama about a reasonable target for the end of the year survey for parents. And we've set that at a 3% increase over the fall's response. As Dr. Kincanon mentioned earlier, student attendance has been a real challenge this year. And setting a target for a challenge has also been difficult. We've determined that as we move into this year, the, as long as our campuses are meeting or exceeding the district average, then that's a reasonable target. We then will be setting new targets after the snapshot of the 2223 school year. As you can see on the slide, when I presented this to our board, the language for 2223 and 2324 was to be determined. At our board presentation, one of our board members requested that we remove that particular language and actually state how we will, when we will set those targets. And so in your packets, the language has shifted to the decision will be made after the 2223 snapshot and presented to each board by their November 23 board meeting. November 22 board meeting. Our financial indicators have not changed or had a reason to change. Transformation Waco has had successful audits every year of our existence, and we don't expect that to change or need adjustment. We've had a great deal of success with our charge to provide wraparound services. And it's been particularly vital now as our students recuperate from the pandemic. We do this work to remove non-academic barriers so students can do their best in our schools. We are encouraged by our mid-year growth on MAP and interim assessments, which shows that students are making progress and eliminating the gap between their unfinished learning. 1.8 million or 3.6 million over the next two years will be critical to meeting the goals that we've set forth. We use that funding to enhance professional development with our programs such as the Novice Teacher Academy, our Instructional Leadership Academy. And we have a pipeline for social workers that start with a master of social work, then go to licensed social worker, and then clinical licensed social worker. We've put four social workers through that pipeline. And now we are able to use our licensed clinical social workers to hold, very important, counseling sessions with students and their families. We believe that it is in the best interest of the students of Transformation Waco to remain in the zone for the next two years. And we request respectfully that the board approve our amendments.
Thank you, and thank you, board members, who came tonight to support Dr. McDurham. We appreciate y'all being here. And I know your principals are here as well. I see them. Thank you. Does any member of the board have a question for Dr. McDurham? Yes, Ms. Cordaway.
Dr. McDurham, thank you so much. I've been able to visit campuses and have seen some great work happening on some campuses. And so I know that COVID was the wonderful curveball for everyone in this community. And so I just want to acknowledge the work that is being done in the Transformation Zone. I just have a couple of questions. One of the questions, you know, I'm going through. So I know that STAR, you know, the first, the first year we had TOS. And then when teachers were kind of getting that, and it was simple and straightforward, then they went to tax. And then that was kind of straightforward. And then they kind of switched up a little bit more, made it harder, harder. And then we got STAR, and then they have domains. And it, so when I was reading this domain, I was like, oh, it was hard for me to correlate the STAR domain with the performance measures. And it was, so I'm getting that all straight in my head because I know that STAR has several domains. You've got four domains, three of them. Anyway, it's a big puzzle. So I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. But I, one of the questions that I had was a STAR growth measure, knowing that that was deleted. Can you explain kind of the reasoning why that growth measure was kind of taken out of this new?
Yes, we, taken out for this year?
Yeah, the, sorry, I'm doing, oops, I'm doing the comparison here. Now I go back all down way down here. Sorry, I just.
Are you asking why we set the target for 2023 instead of 2022?
I don't know, I did theirs on page, well, and I might be.
1095.
10, yes, sorry, I pressed the button and it took me all the way to the first page. I am looking on page, sorry, side by side comparison. Comparison of the current performance contract and proposed amendment on page 1095. STAR growth measure was deleted on this proposed amendment.
Oh, okay, so that is, was actually a change in the way that the growth measure was presented within the domain. So we, we still have the progress measure. But TEA, when they went from the first version of the, there initially were four measures of the domains, and they went to three. The, that particular growth measure was, was changed. And now we've addressed those, our targets in the school progress domain. Yes, that is confusing because they, they did make some changes to the accountability.
And then on kind of some of these goals that I've seen set for campuses, you know, I know the STAR testing standard is going to be increased fairly soon, is what they're predicting. With these targets, is this, are these campuses, will they be able to make a C? I mean, with these projected targets?
We're not, so that's a very good question because we do know that the test is changing again. And we, we quite possibly could find ourselves in a situation where some of these targets, just like the one that you just mentioned, are obsolete depending on how they make the changes. But what we've set the targets, the way that we've addressed these targets and set these targets, you know, we start with where our campuses are most likely to meet standard, and that's in the growth measure. If you take the accountability calculations and you put them in three different buckets, the first bucket that, that we and many of the schools within the state will meet standard is in growth. And then we move over into the second bucket to performance. And then we move over into the third bucket to meets and exceed standard. We do feel like that no matter where the, where the language of the measures go, that growth is the target that we should likely be able to meet in 2023. And our, and the targets that we've made are, we've looked closely at where we are at this point in the year and the progress that we made from last year to this year. And so we do think that that is a reasonable target. If it changes dramatically, then we would request to revisit those targets and with our board and your board, if, if the test changes dramatically.
Thank you, yeah, I. I feel like I need to, I have like a million questions back and forth. I mean, I know your administrators have done a fantastic job. I know ours administrators figuring out the puzzle of STAR and how to, how that scoring, I think. It is definitely a puzzle, and it's a moving puzzle. And it's a puzzle whose rules change. The, just curiosity, the exceeds, STAR exceeds? Was that just, why was that removed from the?
Oh, again, that, the way that the, initially in the first round of this, this accountability measure, exceeds had extra points. So, you know, you had so many points for meets and then so many points for exceeds. In the latest version, it's the same. And so if you meet exceeds, you're still getting the same amount of points as if you met meets, and that's why.
Thank you.
Is any? Looking, I know right now we're just talking about this contract with a date set to end at 2024. If the metrics are met or if the metrics are not met, what does the Transformation Waco board see as the future of this partnership past 2024?
Thanks for asking that. What TEA has told us is that if we do present, if, if we are requesting to extend past 2024, we will have to go through the full renewal process. And so that is, that's a conversation that we will have with both boards to see if you want us to pursue the full renewal process. There's, the 1882 partnerships, we were the first one. And the guidelines have changed each year with that as well. And the new guidelines for 1882 partnerships call for more autonomy than, than we were given at the beginning. And so that's, that's a conversation that we would be having with both boards close to the 2024 end of the extension.
But it sounds like you and your board would be open to continuing that. You don't see 2024 as the end of this partnership?
We don't, we are not, we are not pursuing this by the end of 2024. As, we're not pursuing it to say, that's it, and there's no chance of, of others. You know, it's always possible that there are things that the district will want from this partnership. It is possible that other schools may need to become an 1882 partnership. And we would be open to those discussions, but we're not simply assuming that they would continue. Because we do understand that the renewal process is, is a rigorous process.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Gilery.
Dr. McDurham and your board, I want to tell you all, appreciate the work that you've done. I know that, just like here in our district, you've dealt with COVID. You all dealt with the fire and these unforeseen incidents. And I want to say thank you for what you've done. We have discussed a little bit about maybe having a little bit of collaboration and, and discussion and, and maybe come together and form and possibly forming a committee between the boards to where we can have more transparency and communication. And I look forward to that, so thank you.
I hope we're able to do that. Also, I would like to offer, when we have had a major benchmark, I'm happy to come and present that to your board as well. So for instance, when our mid-year MAP data comes in, we present it to our board. I'm happy to present it to you as well.
Okay, the item on our agenda tonight is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding amendment to the performance contract. The administration has recommended, recommended that the contract date be extended through at least June of 15, of 20, um, June 15, 2022. And the amendments that are before us tonight have been proposed by Transformation Waco as presented by Dr. McDurham. I think if no action is taken on the contract tonight, is, is there a deadline to make a decision on the proposed amendments for the sake of TEA? Maybe Mr. DeBir can answer that question.
The most recent guidance that we've received from TEA is to maintain eligibility for Senate Bill 1882 benefits for the current year that we're in. They would need something that indicates that both boards agree that Transformation Waco is continuing to operate the schools this school year. Obviously, we believe that's happening, but they want to see some formal action, and they would need that to be resolved by May at the latest. So they've asked us to look at resolving that in the near future. Consistent with your understanding?
Okay, so if, if the board wanted to get more information about the proposed amendments, we still have some time to do that and take up the contract again at our April meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. McDurham, for coming. Thank you to your board and, and staff. And thank you for the work that you do for our kids. All right, so it doesn't look like any action's going to be taken on the contract tonight. And I will encourage each member of the board to make sure their questions and comments are directed to Dr. Kincanon so she can get what additional information you would like to see before the contract is presented again at our next meeting. All right, Ms. Davis. Budget update, best for last.
Okay, so let's talk a little bit about this budget and what it looks like at this point. We're going to do three things tonight. I want to briefly just go over kind of how we ended up last year. I'm not going to go over it in too much detail. And then we're going to talk about what it looks like for this year under different scenarios. And then we'll take, take a really, really early look at next year. And so nobody get any numbers necessarily embedded in their minds because it could all change. So looking at where we ended up last year, and we're going to just talk about general fund for the most part. We'll talk a little bit about debt service at the end. So we ended up last year, we had, this kind of shows what, how we compared to the original budget and the amended budget. You'll see a huge difference in expenditures on the way we ended up the year compared to the amended budget. A lot of that is because we had to amend into the budget those projects, the design fees for Carver and Waco High. We intended to cover them with bond funds, but because we had not yet passed a bond election, we had to budget for them in our general fund last year. And you'll see that also when we talk about our committed fund balances at the end of the year, we had to commit fund balance for that. But we ended up with 164.9, almost right at 165 million in revenues, kind of in that middle column for that year. And then in expenditures, 163.9. That, other sources, those are transfers in from, we closed some old grant funds out last year, that 94,000. And then other uses, 230,000 that we send to the Day School for the Deaf and Guama and Guaca to cover any deficits that they have. So our net change in fund balance last year was actually positive. We ended up with 862,000. was actually positive. We ended up with 862,000 in the black. Our beginning fund balance was 52.7 million. And so our ending fund balance ended up at 53.5 million. Of that, we, as I said, we had to restrict those bond projects. And then we have other things we'll look at in just a minute. So we had 17.8 million in unspendable inventories, restricted committed fund balances. So it left us with an unassigned fund balance of $35.7 million. This is kind of looks at the trend and you can, you can see on this trend that our expenditures, because in large extent of the projects and also some generally funded projects for Paul Tyson Field, and then we're doing the CNS infrastructure for the cooler and freezer projects. So the expenditures were quite a bit higher than they normally would run. Revenues came down again because of COVID and the low attendance rates and some drop in enrollments. Our revenues actually did decrease a little bit last year. This shows what our unassigned fund balance is at the end of the year. You can see we ended up with an unassigned fund balance of 21.38%. By board policy, if we drop below 20%, we need to come up with a plan to correct our fund, get it back up to 20%. It's been as high as 30.4% in, I think that was 2013, 14. But we've run right at 21% for the last two years, mostly due to COVID and, as I said, the decrease in enrollment and ADA. On our general fund breakdown of our fund balances, this I was talking about a while ago, part of what is not in the unassigned fund balance is our inventory in our warehouse, running about 400,000. Our other restricted fund balance, this is the fund balance for the transformation campuses because they generate, they get to keep the revenue that they generate through the foundation school program. And what they haven't spent at the end of August of 2021 was this million seven. Then we, oh, sorry. Then we had the, as I said, the construction projects, 3.8 million of that was for Waco High and Carver. And then the other 6.5 million was what was remaining on Paul Tyson and the CNS project. Then on capital expenditures, we do have a committed funds for bus purchases. And then other committed fund balances, when we have purchase orders that are outstanding at August 31st that have not been canceled and have not been received, we go ahead and we have to commit those funds as well as part of our fund balance.
Cheryl, can I ask a question about the, the 1.7 related to transformation zone? So you said 1.7 was returned to the fund balance as unspent as of August 31st, '21? And then your note says it's restricted under the contract. What is restricted in what way?
That it belongs to the zone. The revenues that they generate belong to them. They haven't spent them yet, so that is restricted in our fund balance.
So they can continue to spend that one? Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Okay, so again, that left us that unassigned fund balance of 35.7 million and the total fund balance was 53.5. Now, we did, and we'll kind of look at it in a minute, there was two and a half million dollars that TEA reduced our revenues for because they held us harmless in our ADA. That two and a half million dollars, they said we could use S R 2 funding to supplant our budget and cover the deficit. We did not do that this past year because we already were in the black, so we didn't do that. That two and a half million is still in our S R 2 funds. We received it. And it can be either used to help out with this year's situation or it could be, we can still use it for projects if we feel like we don't need to, to move that. So the, again, I don't want, I didn't want to talk about this too much. You can look at the major variances in our revenue. And then later on, I've got major variances in expenditures. The one thing I do want to point out here is that foundation school program revenue. We actually ended up, they cut us the two and a half million dollars, which was a reduction. We ended up ahead 1.1 million. That was because we did that year, unfortunately not this year, but that year we did presume that we were going to lose enrollment and ADA. And so we did budget with a lower revenue. And so we actually did do better than what we had, with the hold harmless, we did better than what we thought we were going to do. This looks a little bit just at our property tax collections as part of our school first. We have to look at property tax collections for 2021. You can see the historical collections and adjustments on the following page. We talk a little bit about what those percentages are. They've gone down the last few years. Last year was one of the lower years. We only had a 99.8% collection rate. You can see in 1718, we are up to 105%. That red line basically demonstrates our average collections over the years. The bottom graph shows total collections and adjustments as a percent of the current levy. The red line is the, is the, just tax collections. And so in 1718, again, our tax collections were really high. That gold line, because it's lower, we had big adjustments in those years downwards. So that, those collections that year were lower because of those adjustments. Now then, again, this is our major variances in expenditures. A couple of things, contracted building maintenance and repairs. Part of that, we did receive insurance money for doing those repairs for Carver, for hail damage and for the winter storm damage. So we did underspend that. We're spending that in the current year. And then you see down towards the bottom for construction, that's where that big difference is between the amended budget and what we actually spent because we didn't finish those projects and they're ongoing in the current year. Now, this is our administrative cost ratio. It ended up higher than it has been. It ended up at 10.13% for last year. Was not planned to be that high, but part of what happened is we had a lot of vacancies in teaching positions. We couldn't get substitutes. We had aid vacancies, a lot of aid vacancies. So a lot of our under expenditures were in instruction. And the denominator of this ratio is mostly Function 11 instruction. We did not have the same kinds of vacancies in all, in administration, in Function 41 or Function 21 school leaders, instructional leadership in the district offices. So the numerator stayed basically what we had planned for during budget, but the denominator went down because of all the vacancies in instruction. So this kind of shows our enrollment and ADA trends. You can see what this looks like graphically. Our enrollment, there's only about a seven and a half percent loss there, but in ADA, with, over those years, there's a 12.2% loss. That mostly attributable to this year when, as of when we're, I'm projecting based on, in these graphs, I had through third six weeks, first three, six weeks. And so we're projecting forward that based on prior year's trends, that we would end this year at 12,060 ADA. And as you can see, that is quite a bit lower than what we've had in previous years, significantly lower. And our funding is based on average daily attendance. So looking at what that ADA, if we had to use the 12,060 that we were projecting, we would have revenues of 163.6 expenditures, and these are projected expenditures of 174.4. We would have a loss there of 10.7. Again, those other resources is what we send to the day school for the deaf and Guama and Guaca. That could change some. I think that will be a little bit lower than that number when we finish up the year. But at this point, that would be a loss of 11.4 million dollars for the year. That would bring our fund balance from that total fund balance of 53.5 down to 42.1 million. And it does, that revenue number includes 3.1 million of insurance reimbursements and the payment that we received from the county for Paul Tyson. We received a million dollars earlier this year. We will receive another million dollars next year, should receive another million dollars next year. But, so it only includes 3.1 million of atypical revenues. What it does also include though, it includes 6.2 million of not typical expenditures, Paul Tyson and the CNS freezer plus what we're spending for the hail damage and the, some leftover winter storm damage. We did most of that last year, but we did have some more of that this year. So I think that's about 3 million there that we would be better off if we didn't have those unusual expenditures. So looking at that average enrollment and average daily attendance, what it's looked like over the years, I have now put a little X because when we were doing these, when I presented this on Monday, what we had was some information that they, TEA was looking at doing a hold harmless for us based on the 2018, 19 school year. And there was nothing said about only four, six weeks. We thought it would be for the whole year. So I had done a projection based on that. And we did get information yesterday. They did come out with new rules yesterday that it will be based on the 1920 school year, and it will be just for the first four, six weeks. We will not be held harmless on the last two, six weeks. So this, so we lost 2 million dollars today, but basically. At least that's the way I felt today working these up. So I went from a number of about 12,855 projected to 12,595. I did have to pull in the fourth, six weeks, which I hadn't done yet, pulled those in today, and then applied at these percentages, went through the template. This morning, the Center for School Finance did put out what they thought the template would look like. So this work was done based on that. This afternoon, the state came out with a little bit different methodology, but it's only 1.9 students over what I calculated earlier. So this is close enough for this purpose. Now, again, it, with the original methodology, we would have just been in the whole instead of 11 million, 5.6 million, which is, makes us, and then we still have that swing of about 3 million of those atypical expenditures in there. This is what it looks like now, 7.6 million with that ADA that the state released yesterday because the 20, 1920 was 94.2%. The prior year was 94.6%. This is 94.2%. And again, just for those first four, six weeks. So it increased our average daily attendance, applying that by 534.62 students and 3.8 million dollars in additional revenue. So looking a little bit at 22, 23. So the things that we need to know before we can really look at our revenues and what's going to be available for us to spend are, first of all, property tax collections and valuations because they not only impact what we collect in property taxes, they impact how much the state contributes. The mix between the two, one offsets the other. So when our property values go up and our collections go up, our state revenues go down. So we don't really, the state benefits, we don't. So then the second thing is on our foundation school program, enrollment and attendance. Now that's critical because the property values don't offset losses in enrollment and attendance. So it's really important to keep those up. It's important to know those numbers. And after this past year, my guess, and when I thought we were going to go up instead of go down another 432 students, I have gone down. And they were asking me at Leadership Team Monday, are you sure we're going to go down? Every grade level went down. The only grade level that didn't go down this year was ninth grade. And I think that may be just because we had a lot of failures in the upper grade levels and they're back in the ninth grade. And so that is the only grade level that showed going up. So I went down about 50 kids for this coming year. As we go through the year, we'll see how that goes. But I just wanted to be more on the safe side this year than I was, or this coming year than I was this year. So then, again, the credit recovery impact on electives, continued increase in special education. Because we, one of the things we saw a huge loss in for our funding in the current year is career and technology programs because they put in a new funding formula. It's now based on the level of course you take. And because a lot of our kids are recovering credits in core areas, they were not as able to take those higher level CATE courses. So we were down about 1,008 in CATE funding this year. I think that'll go up too because these, those numbers will go up a little bit because this percentage is going to be applied to our special programs, but we didn't really have any way to do that today. So I think we'll gain a little bit of money back there. And then our special ed has been increasing in our dyslexia identifications. And then again, the property value increases coupled with enrollment decreases are making us a richer district. And so we're getting to that point where we are maybe becoming a rich district. So that's something we're going to be having to look at a little closer. Then of course, on expenditures, looking at compensation and impact on employee shortages, we have unavoidable rate increases, fuel, our insurance. We haven't gotten our property insurance quote yet, but since they paid us out about 20 million dollars, 21, 22 million dollars this past year, I expect it'll go up. And then utilities. And then any, we have not put a lot of money into major repairs and improvements or vehicle replacements or, and then we need to talk about, not this coming year necessarily, but the year after, on those, the costs of anything that we funded with those federal stimulus funds like librarians, which we have done some in counselors. So, property taxes. We got our preliminary values, early, early values, not preliminary. We won't get preliminary values till the end of April, 27% increase in property values. Never seen anything this high. Going if, based on prior year's patterns, this is our three-year average is 3.53% from preliminary to certified values. That would say we'd be at about 22.4 over last year's certified values. Taking that forward, we would, just, well, this is the other information he gave us. This is the gain on residential property for the local school districts. And I did verify, I did talk to Joe Bobbitt, this is a percentage gain on market. So you can see Waco ISD down there at the bottom. We have a 74.17% increase on market. Now, residential properties will be capped at 10%. So they will not necessarily, they're not going to see a 74% increase. The median gain is 33.9%. So that's how much our market values have gone up in, within our district boundaries. But you can see, all of them are, are rather high. We're just at the highest. So the revenue impact on the general fund, if we assume that 22.4% increase and a maximum, I went through the calculation for the MCR, the maximum compressed rate would be 80.46 cents. And then with our 13 cents that we have in our, from our TRE, we, our rate would be 94.29 cents. Assuming, I'm also assuming, because I don't think the voters are not going to vote for an increase in the homestead exemption from 25,000 to 40,000 in May. I'm assuming right now that that passes and that we have a 98% collection of the current levy. That would add 6.4 million dollars in revenue to our budget. would add $6.4 million in revenue to our budget. The impact on the foundation school program, all those assumptions above for property taxes, 14,027 for fall P Eames, it was 14,086 on fall P Eames this year, but I'm assuming 14,027, and, which is down 59 from this year, and then an average daily attendance rate, or average daily attendance as a percent of fall P Eames. So this is a little bit different percentage than what you look at when you look at ADA percentages, because this is based on fall P Eames, and normally, when you're looking at TEA's ADA percentages, it's based on average day, average daily membership. So a little bit different number. But 89.6%, which would give us 12,478, and assume, assuming the same trend for our special populations. So we would lose 10.9 mil, 10.8 million in state revenue, so the impact to the general fund from our original budget this year will be a loss of 4.4 million dollars. On the debt service side, though, increased property values is good news, because that will bring down, well, it's not good, you know, as we were talking about, it's not good news for our taxpayers because they're still going to have to pay their taxes on increased values, but it will bring down that rate that we quoted during the bond election. So looking at those same assumptions that we talked about a while ago, it looks like right now that our interest in sinking rate would be about 26.8 cents, and that will generate the 5.9 million. It looks like, though, with our property value increase, we will no longer get the INS hold harmless, so we'll lose $286,000 there. Our additional debt is 5.7 million, so that net impact on the general fund revenue is about $17,000. We had, as I said at the bottom, during the bond presentation, we said the tax rate would be about 30.7 cents, so this is about four cents below that. The last sheet is just some dates on things that will be happening as far as our certification of values and when we would have to adopt a budget and all. We'll be back before then.
Thank you.
It could be worse, it could be 11.
Well, it changed, yeah, 2 million today, so, changes every day. Thank you for your work, and thank you for staying on top of it. So, the struggle is real. Seems like, seems like from one thing to another, right?
Yeah, it said the pandemic is the gift that keeps on giving, right? We just kind of roll from one, one challenge to the next challenge. This is our next challenge, and we'll work through it. We've got, we've got some, got to identify our strategies, and we'll make some decisions, and we'll keep you informed. But we're definitely going to have to make some cuts.
All right, who is delivering, Mr. De Beere, announcements?
Thank you, Madam President. Next week, we get to celebrate our assistant principals because it's National Assistant Principals Week. Every day throughout the school year, our assistant principals are leaders on the campus, they're also the folks who make the campus run from day to day and solve problems at the ground level. We're really appreciative of the work they do and looking forward to that opportunity next week. Of course, I want to reiterate, on April 9th, we have the Waco ISD Job Fair from 9:00 to 11:30 in the gymnasium at University High. You can find all the information about the Job Fair on our website at wacoisd.org/jobfair. April 15th, that Friday, is a holiday for our students and staff, and then very quickly, we're into even deeper preparations for the next school year with the pre-kindergarten roundup at the Waco ISD Stadium on April 23rd. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The board did have closed session posted at the beginning of the meeting, but in consideration of our families and students that were here, we did get a little rushed. Is there any desire to continue the conversation in closed session before we adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So the board will reconvene in closed session. We will be returning to adjourn. I do not recommend you stay, because there will be no action when we come back, other than for me to say we're adjourned. So.
Not necessarily.
There probably will not be action, but there, I guess there could be.
Right.
But I would encourage people to watch online or on TV. So I guess, I guess you can take a chance and stay. And I could, I can't tell you when that would be. So with that, good night, thank you. The board will reconvene in open session, we've been in closed session where no action was taken. And before we adjourn, I'll ask whether or not any member of the board has a motion to make? Okay, we are adjourned. Good night, thank you.